Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Red Light Task Force meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6:15 PM. This is the special meeting of June 30th. When I call your name, this is item number one, just please say here for the record, Ms. Helen Nixon, William Brown, Victor Blanco,
Here.
Dexter Burke?
Here.
Darlene Childs?
Here.
William Cordero? Claudine Fox? Patrice Howell? Ricky Martinez? I see you Ricky, thank you.
There, sorry.
It's okay. Naisha McCauley?
Here.
Sandra Magara?
Here.
Did I pronounce your name okay this time Sandra?
It's Magara.
Magara, oh my god, I feel so bad. Okay, I'm sorry about that. David Warren? Charles Teal Senior?
Here.
Jeremiah Torres? Patricia Turelia? Lawrence Williams?
Here.
Hyacinth Yenney? And our alternate member is William Clark. And as I said, we have eight task force members, so we don't have a quorum, so we're not going to be able to vote on anything, but we will still be able to discuss any conversations that were had during your committee meetings. So we'll get into public comments. I don't see anyone from the public currently on. If there is anyone that would like to give general comments, now would be the time to do it. Seeing none, let's move forward with the, we're going to table the approval of minutes from May 26th. I will just say that it was, it was a short read, so hopefully everyone had an opportunity to review them, but it was about a page and a half. That will be tabled until the next meeting. If anyone joins after this time, then we will have a quorum, in which case we could choose to vote on them. But let's go ahead and get into the working group reports. Before we get into the reports, I just wanted to make an introduction. So Adam Murphy, if you could make, there you go. Just so that everyone's aware, I currently serve as the Chief Administrative Officer for the Court of Common Council for the city of Hartford. I've served the city for four years. Unfortunately, I will be leaving as of today. Today is my last day. And I have transitioned Adam Murphy into my position, who will be the new Chief Administrative Officer for the Court of Common Council. So Adam, if you have any comments you'd like to make, now's the time.
Like David said, I'm Adam Murphy. I briefly introduced myself before he hopped on, but I used to work in City Council about in 2020 for a year, and then I transitioned over to the Office of Sustainability with the city of Hartford. And now, like I said, I'm coming back home to City Council. I've, I, I'm really excited to join this group of folks on the call, and there's so much knowledge, and I'm really looking forward to working with you all and joining in this space. So, thank you. I'm just gonna be listening in today and taking down meeting minutes and the recording, obviously, but I look forward to talking with you all in the future. And I apologize for the confusion that my background is a picture of David Grant.
And to give everyone some background knowledge, so as some of you may know, Council President and I have been working on this initiative for almost two years. We started this effort back in 2020. Adam has been with us since we started. So he has the preliminary information on what it is that we're trying to accomplish. He knows the group members, because he helped, you know, with, with the process of onboarding all of you to some degree, even if it was in the, in the working in the background. So he is going to be a fantastic resource. He has an MPP from the University of Connecticut. So he specializes in quantitative and qualitative data. He'll be able to support this, this task force as you continue to work towards creating a better Hartford. So we feel very lucky to have him back with City Council, and I know that he's going to do a great job. So thank you very much, Adam. With that being said, let's go ahead and move into the working group reports. We'll begin with the Intersection Identification Committee. It looks like the Chair is Darlene Childs. Darlene, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Is my co-chair on by any chance?
Who is your co-chair?
Bishop.
I am, I am.
Great, because I'm in the middle of something and I may not be able to give the full report, but I would like to thank you all for giving us the opportunity. We had a wonderful time putting this together. And my co-chair would, if you don't mind, would you please take over?
Sure. Thank you, Darlene, and thank you again, David. So suggested, good evening, everyone. Suggested red light camera location placement. And we have Main and Tower, Main and Albany, Washington and Park Street, Blue Hills and Tower, Albany and Blue Hills, New Park, Flatbush, Farmington and Sigourney, Windsor and Pleasant, Park and Prospect, Westland and Barber, Tower Avenue, Barber Street, Main and Mall, Retreat in Main, Windsor and Pleasant, Woodland and Asylum, Farmington and Prospect, Wethersfield and Jefferson, Hillside and Flatbush, and Capin and Main. Also, these possible locations were selected due to traffic density and activity. And we're continuing to look at other areas. These were just a number of them that we were able to put together based on some work that Darlene did and some areas that she was able to look at on some camera and maps. With respect to confidentiality and privacy, she was not able to get more done from the Hartford Police Department in terms of data. We're working on it, so hopefully at our next meeting, we'll be able to produce a more in-depth number of camera locations, and as we continue, we do understand that this is important, and these intersections are very strategic in their, in their, their locations, so we want to ensure that we have the cameras at the right place, and we continue to look into it, and that's what we have so far. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Archbishop. Before we open it up to questions, for the public's sake, can you just tell us two things? One, how many total intersections has your committee identified? And two, I know that you referenced Darlene's work with the police department. Was there any other resources that you all used to identify those interceptions?
Yes, so first question first. There were 18 possible cameras thus far that we've identified. And in addition to the police department, we're speaking with community leaders, business owners, and, and citizens to get a feel of also not only what the police department think are hotbeds or hotspots, but where they think that they need traffic red lights, where they need red lights. Obviously, they live there and they know when cars are running through there and, and the danger they pose, so we are speaking with them and will continue to speak with them as they are the stakeholders in, in this. Did that answer your question?
That was great, thank you. And then the last question, and Ricky, I saw your hand up, and Victor, I think you might have a question too. The last thing, and again, this is just for the public's sake. Can you talk about some of the questions that came about through your committee's conversations? Were there any lingering concerns or things that the larger task force should be aware of as we continue to digest some of that information?
Yeah, well, I, I think one of the, the most pressing things that we've had to deal with is the number of red light cameras that will be installed. We want to spread it out throughout the city of Hartford, but we also would like to know, get a feel as to the number, so we know that we're equally distributing it throughout the city of Hartford. I think that was it, that was the, the primary concern that we've been dealing with so far, and that we like the, the larger task force to address.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and open it up to questions. Thank you. Archbishop Dexter Burke, this was very informative. We'll begin with Ricky Martinez, and then we'll move to Chief Teal. So Ricky, you have the floor.
Thank you. Nothing, I just, I heard Wethersfield and Jefferson. And I'm trying to picture if that even intersects. Am I correct?
Let me put my glasses on.
Sure, sure, sure.
Yeah, I think where that is, that's right there by Congress, by Congress Place, right there. So you come off Jefferson, you can just take that. I think it's a right, and you go straight on to Wethersfield Avenue. It's right by Congress. I, I think it should correctly be, be Congress, Wethersfield and Congress.
Okay. I think Congress, if I'm not mistaken, I think it parallels Wethersfield. Are we talking about, right, where, where Cloud Nine is, the next block over onto Wethersfield?
Correct, and that's the, that's the light right there. You make that right, you ride on to Wethersfield by the, the Chinese restaurant there.
Okay. Got it. So I think it's Wethersfield and Willis, or Willis and Wethersfield?
That's it, that's it, Willis.
Okay.
So we can change it to Willis Street.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, thank you very much, Ricky. Let's go ahead and move on to Chief Teal. Chief, you have the floor.
Thank you, David. Thank you very much, Archbishop. I really appreciate the invitation, the sharing. My question may be somewhat more of a request than a question. I recently attended a meeting at the Annie Fisher School regarding the next step in installing infrastructure for bicyclists in the city of Hartford. You may have noticed that we have many bicycle lanes, but actual infrastructure, meaning something has been built to make bicycling safer. We've only got two of those, one of them in the city of Hartford, and one being planned. So I'm, I'm hoping, based upon the meeting that I attended, that as we proceed, that we can take into consideration as we place these cameras, the infrastructure that's being installed, and also the other, what they refer to as facilities in the bicycle master plan. We can take into consideration those other lanes that are being utilized. This is a very comprehensive plan that has been put together. And I think if we coordinate the bicycle master plan with our efforts to make these streets of the city of Hartford safer, we'll make progress that can truly be appreciated by those of us who still love to ride bicycles.
Well, certainly. Thanks, Chief.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
And you know, that, that's a great point. What I would say is that part of Adam Murphy's role is to bring to the task force individuals within the city that have conducted some of this work. And so I, I think that one of the first people that we might bring to the task force is maybe Grace Ye. Adam, through his role with the Office of Sustainability, has worked with our Director of Operations, Nat Gale, and so he does have knowledge on some of the work that's being done in the city to make our, our city more pedestrian and bicyclist friendly. And so that's, that's part of what these meetings are for, right? We're going to bring city officials to the task force, so that you all have all the information that you need to then make sincere and, and credible recommendations on how we should move forward in implementing a potential red light pilot. So that's a great point, Chief Teal. Thank you so much. Adam, that's something that, that you can work on with the group. With that being said, let's go ahead and move into the second person, Naisha McCauley. You have your hand up, so you have the floor.
Thank you. I, it, just, I'm not sure if some of the data that you were requesting from the police department, or maybe from other groups included the, you mentioned traffic density in other activities, but are, are the other activities specifically related to like crash data, or like pedestrian deaths, or anything like that?
Yes, Naisha, and, and with respect to the time, they could not compile everything to us to meet this meeting's date. So we're hopeful that they'll get it to us within the next few weeks, and we'll get to look at that again and extend our, our camera placement recommendations.
Okay, and I, I, I could forward to you and Darlene and others. I, I, an additional resource that might be a source of data. There's an active transportation group in the city, and they may be a good source, if you haven't already connected with them.
Please, please share it with us if you can. Thanks, Naisha.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
And Naisha, what I did, and I think this came through, okay, in the chat, and this is open for everyone. I indicated who's in which group, so you can see who to send information to. I didn't see, Victor, did you have any questions for the, the committee that you wanted to address before I close this conversation out?
Uh, no, I didn't, I didn't have any questions for this particular committee, no. I'm sorry if I look like I did, sorry.
Not a problem, Victor. So everyone in the chat is the, the different groups that we have, and who's in the group. If there are any lingering questions or something that you would like the committee to take a look at, feel free to reach out to any of the members of that group. Before I move on to the next committee, is there anyone else in the Camera Placement Committee that would like to give any statements? Or general comments, or things that the task force at large needs to be aware of?
Yes. I have a concern about the lack of placement on four-way intersections. Everything that's listed on that list was just on red light cameras. And I was concerned that if we just targeted red light cameras, it would just cause more traffic. People avoiding those camera spots and going through the neighborhoods. And with increased traffic in the neighborhoods. I, I live in an area that we don't have any red lights in the, in my neighborhood, but we do have a lot of people running around through four-way intersections and just not stopping. And how would, how would we solve that problem? That's what I'm more concerned to me than just the red light cameras.
That's a great point, Lawrence. I will tell you that within the city, at times, we will do DUI enforcement checkpoints. And on social media, people will tell everyone where those checkpoints are. And so folks, you know, will go on other paths to get to where they need to go. So we've experienced that in other cities, right? So like in Phoenix, Arizona, for example, we have red light cameras, we implemented this program, and people knew where they were. And so because Phoenix is built on a grid system, it was very easy to avoid them. And so that's a great point, Lawrence. What I would recommend is that the Camera Placement Committee have in their next meeting, a discussion about how to avoid situations like that, or what to do if we're actually diverting traffic into the neighborhoods. How are we going to keep our neighborhoods safe? Well, then, working with the other committee that does additional, you know, safety measures with, you know, stop signs and speed humps, what would be your recommendation? So that if folks are trying to avoid those red light camera intersections, and they're going through our neighborhoods, what can we do to make sure our neighborhoods are, are safe?
So, well, I have a follow-up question, then, because it raises another issue. Should I be talking to the Alternative Committee, the third committee, about that issue, or should I just try and get a resolve through the Red Light Placement Committee?
No, I mean, every, every task force member has the opportunity to talk to anyone in any of the committees. So I would definitely encourage you to either reach out to Darlene Childs or Archbishop Dexter Burke with some of these concerns, and that way they can bring it up in their next committee meeting.
I'm on that committee. We've had that discussion.
So continue to delve into that, you know, we'd like to hear some solutions from you all on what you think we should do, so that, you know, we're not creating unnecessary, you know, problems for our neighborhoods.
I got you. Thank you.
Yep, and as part of your report next month, it would be great if you all could talk a little bit about this issue, so that, you know, the, the committee, the Additional Safety Measures Committee has some of your input, and, and what they could potentially look at, so, you know, we're able to meet that, that concern. And I see that Hyacinth has joined us. Hello, Hyacinth, thank you very much. So we'll go ahead and get started with the Service Provider Selection Committee, Victor Blanco. You're the Chair of that committee. You have the floor.
Hello, thank you, everybody. So as, as the previous committee had stated in regards to waiting for data, I had also reached out to the police department. I'm just waiting to hear back from the Intelligence Division to see what we currently use in, in certain situations for, for, with the, with the city, just to, just to get their feedback on it. But one of our, our, the major concerns that I had for, we had for this service provider is to see, you know, obviously someone who can meet the needs of, of, of the program, but also to get a company that isn't going to fleece the, the city. So one thing that, that came evident is that, you know, these are companies that, that make money off of the service that they provide. Most of them tend to hover around 80%-ish, you know, high 70s to 80% of, of the money that they pick up, they keep, or that they, they put out in fines that they keep, and then the 20% or so goes back to the city. Different problems with that, you know, is that, you know, who really is getting affected by that negatively? Usually tends to be the city itself, so trying to find something that's a little bit less bad for the city. So, um, one of the companies that stood out, I think, is Xerox. Now, most people know Xerox as, as a copying machine company, and, but they actually own a bunch of other companies as well underneath that label. And one of that company, that company is called Conduent, and they're a Xerox subsidiary. Conduent provides a lot of the, the, the needs that we would need it for in this, in this particular program, but also in a bunch of other services they could provide later on if the city chooses so. They have a lot of data acquisition tools, metrics. And, and the, and the best part, if people didn't know, Xerox is based off of, out of Connecticut. They're headquartered in Norwalk. Used to be in Stanford, but now in Norwalk. So they might have a vested interest to, to have their, their playground, which we call it, to showcase their equipment and what they can do by using their, their Hartford, their, their, their capital city for the, as, as, you know, as a test bed. I could not find any particular return rate in regards to what, how much of the percentage of the fees collected goes to the city, and how much goes to Xerox. I'm still working on that. But, you know, the last critical step one, so these service providers usually go through a bunch of different processes for you to, you know, once they gather the photo of, of, of the offense, then they process it, you know, and then send it off to approval. Now, who does that approval varies from company to company. Approval of, you know, who gets fined varies from company to company. With Xerox, it looks like it gets sent back to law enforcement for them to do the final approval versus some private party. So there's a pro for that. So that's, uh, that, that seems to be, I, I personally think the, the best fit for, for the need that we have to have here in, in Connecticut.
Thank you very much, Victor. I, that, that's great. I will say, and this is public record, so I want to be on the record in saying this, that a lot of the other cities that have implemented a red light program of sorts has failed because of the greed of the organizations that are contracted to come in and monitor that program. And so the concerns of the NCA, or the NAACP and the ACLU, and, and I'm sorry, Adam, can you go ahead? Ms. Helen Nixon has joined us, and I'll, I'll, I'll send control of the meeting over to her as soon as I make this comment. But, um, Ms. Helen, we're going to go ahead and place you on mute, because we're getting a lot of background noise from you, okay? A lot of the concern from, from civil rights groups is that these organizations target communities of color, and they put these cameras in places that continue to disenfranchise these communities. So that is a concern that exists within the city of Hartford. A lot of the feedback that we've been given is, hey, this seems like a good idea, because we have a lot of pedestrian fatalities due to reckless drivers in the city, but at the same time, we don't want to continue to target communities that are already, you know, being, being disenfranchised because of other policies that exist. So I'm, I'm incredibly heartened that your, that your committee is being mindful of, of some of the, the charging practices of some of these other organizations. We want to see more community investment. So if you were to find an organization that is willing to take some of the money that's, that's, you know, collected through fines, and then reinvest that back into the community, that would be a perfect situation for us. But those are some of the concerns that we get in Council President's office. So I think that your committee is off to a great start, because you already recognize that there are some bad actors out there. And so I applaud you and, and the work of, of your committee thus far. And I'm looking forward to hearing some additional feedback as we continue this. So let's go ahead and get into questions from the task force. We'll begin with Chief Teal. Chief Teal, you have the floor.
Thank you, David. You touched on something that I wanted to emphasize, but I may have taken it to an irrational extreme, and I, I say that because I look for the feedback from all of you to tell me if my thinking is clear or not. If we were to divert or redirect the funds, whether it's 20% or even less, that we, we received from those individuals who engaged in the illegal behavior, if we could direct those funds into the neighborhood where it was, the funds were generated, it may have a better effect. It looks like to me the double win, either you will have a safer neighborhood, meaning there won't be many funds, because no one's breaking the law, or you'll have a neighborhood that has many infractions, but has the financial resources necessary to make some corrections, and I did allude to that earlier in my original statement regarding bicycle facilities. We desperately need the money necessary to spend on infrastructure in our various neighborhoods. Painted lines are not infrastructure, but it's beneficial, it's helpful. But if we had those funds redirected, so that we could put something up to traffic calming devices, for example, it, it may prove to be beneficial, but once again, I don't know if it's rational, once again, to think that such a thing is, is allowable, acceptable, would be well-received.
such a thing is, is allowable, acceptable, would be well received by the general public. I don't know.
That's a great point, Chief Teal. And, and I would definitely ask Victor, you and your committee to be mindful of that as you continue this conversation, because again, that's the input that we've received from residents. I think a majority of residents here in Hartford understand that red light cameras might help reduce fatalities in the city, pedestrian fatalities. It might help reduce some of the reckless driving incidents that we have here in the city, which you all know exists. This is not new. Hartford is not a safe city for pedestrians and our bicyclists. There are people that come into our city and don't respect the laws that we have, which is why we're, we're forming this task force in the first place. But at the same time, we don't want to be taken advantage of by these organizations who have managed some of these red light cameras in other cities. And, you know, again, because of a variety of reasons, the, the programs have failed. So that's a good point.
David. David.
Yes, Hyacinth.
So, you know, I, I'm listening to everything and, yeah, I understand that you talk about, well, most of these things are, are happening in poor neighborhood. But my concern is that we can't have it both ways. If we're going to put a law in place, we should not think about, well, oh, these inner, inner city people or whatever the case may be. We're going to put something in place that address anyone, everyone that comes into our community and drive crazy. You know, I'm lucky yesterday morning, there was these two drivers coming off the street and I'm lucky I wasn't on that side of the road because if I was, I would probably be gone. Okay? So we took, and, and again, distracted driving. They were driving and with their telephone and stuff like that. Now, we know that we put something in place. It may not be legal in the city. I think it's something that has to be passed in the state to make it more effective because you got to be mindful that someone says, oh, well, I got these tickets and, or whatever the case may be, you, you guys are not real if it's not coming from the state. So I'm just a little more concerned about that. We, it's great that we have great ideas and whatever the case may be, but we, we've gone through this thing at the state how many times and nothing came true because nobody wants to be accountable for all the trappings of things that needs to happen. Who's going to monitor camera? Is it going to be like New York where you get a ticket right away or whatever the case may be? So there's a lot of things to be said when we talk about red light and we want it, of course we do. Hey, would you go somewhere else, honey? We want that camera, but we got to figure out about the laws and lawsuits and all the other things that goes along with it. So there's a lot to be said, okay? And I'm just putting that out there because I want people to be mindful. And we, we, we need to stop talking about, oh, yes, the people of Hartford are getting trapped with this. Well, if the people of Hartford do the wrong thing that they need to be, um, also be held accountable to. So let's get that piece out and let's stop, stop talking about, oh, we always trying to attack minority group and all that kind of thing. Let's look at the law, okay? And let's not put, put that concern because we always use these poor people, okay? Well, these poor people are breaking the law at all times. So let's address that issue. We can't, we can't sugarcoat things. We can't sugarcoat things, okay?
David, this is Sandra. Um, David, has there been any communication with the police department? Because I know the police department has, over in the old police department, they have a system over there where if there's a car accident, they can locate that car going from the north end to the south end because there are cameras within the city of Hartford. Now, you know, she's talking about rather than that is legal or not. What, did anybody speak to the police department at all about the cameras that they have and how they could probably be integrated with this red light that we're talking about?
Yes, I did.
That's a great point. Darlene, do you want to?
Or was anybody even aware of the fact that, or was anybody aware of the fact that they have a, oh, I forgot what they called it, but there is a network over there at the old police department where they can track like automobile accidents if a hit and run. You know, they have cameras all over the city of Hartford.
Yes, that's correct.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Darlene.
Okay, good. Yes, I was saying to, when we were doing our research, we were trying to get a hold of the person in charge of the camera, but because of confidentiality law, they couldn't give us that information directly. But however, we were able to still put together some other things to, you know, basically we came up with those intersections based on the crime rate and the activities in the area. But we do know about the existing camera and I do believe, like I said to them, it would be, it wouldn't be conducive if we're duplicating and trying to put cameras in a place where they already have cameras. So we tried to really need that information because we don't, we do not want to duplicate.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying. Has anybody, has anybody reached out to the police department or the captain or somebody to make sure that we don't duplicate?
Yes, we have. We've done that. And also another one of our concerns, and I believe, um, Dexter mentioned, we need to know how many cameras we're talking about facing so we can have a better idea so we can strategically face them throughout the city. We don't have a number of cameras like where they, so we can specifically say where we want to locate them.
Yeah, okay.
So, yes, so as to our question, we did, we were speaking, we're in conversation with the police department. We're trying to work that out so that we don't duplicate the services.
Right. And, and I, I don't want it to, the me, I want to get everyone out of here at a decent time. So what I will say before I get into everyone that's raised their hand and been very patient, Naisha, Ricky, Chief Teal, I see you. I'm going to call on you next, is this is very different than the hundreds of cameras that are already placed in the city of Hartford. Those cameras do not record. They're a way for us to track what is happening, but they don't snap pictures. And I use the, the record is a broad sense. What we're talking about are actual cameras, not recording devices. Actual cameras that snap a picture once a person enters an intersection, once the light is red. Those pictures are then used to determine whether or not that person has violated the law and then are taken. The cameras that are already placed in Hartford don't do that. They don't snap pictures and they're used for different purposes. Sandra, to your point, if a person commits a crime in one part of the city, the police department is able to track that vehicle through this camera network that already exists. But those cameras are very different than the type of cameras that were proposed.
Okay.
Okay. So let's go ahead and get into questions from the task force. Naisha McCauley, you have the floor.
Hi, um, Victor and Chief Teal and other committee members. I'm actually a part of this committee, but I apologize. I haven't been able to connect or meet on this particular topic. So this may have already been addressed in committee and is probably most appropriate to be handled in committee. But I just want to put it on the table as far as in regards to service providers and thinking about a work plan that includes maybe demoing or talking with service providers as well as other cities who have to the best of our ability to determine success, right? Like factoring in a timeline whereby we could connect with some other cities that have implemented this and successfully are working with a vendor. That would be our goal, not necessarily maybe some of the other questions that other committee members might want to ask, but I, I would be particularly interested in their relationship with the vendor in some of the areas that we would be concerned with. So that, those are just my two things.
Thank you very much, Naisha. Ricky, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, like she, unfortunately, the last time we had a meeting, I, I tried to stay on, but I was on my way to North Carolina, so I couldn't get real, real good reception. So I was very limited in what was going on that day. But in listening to everything that, that is being said here, David, you're absolutely right. That, that task force, that C4 program is totally different, and you've, you've said it best than what we're trying to do here. And, and keep in mind that this is a pilot program. All we're doing here is figuring out whether A, this is going to work for us and B, where it's needed the most. If I'm not mistaken, we're looking, we're trying to identify areas where we feel is going to be the most beneficial, where there is the most violations, if you will. With respects to, with respects to, um, the, the people, the service providers that are going to come in and, and take advantage or whatever. I mean, excuse me, uh, for being naive, but is this going through the centralized rule of infraction? Because normally tickets that are, are, are given like that are, are going through the centralized rule of infraction. So is it going to them? Because if it is, then that money is going to be split between the city, centralized rule of infraction, which is the state, and the service provider who's going to want their piece of the pie. Am I correct with this, David?
No, that, that's a great point. And I think that what the state, our state representatives are looking for is, one, we're the capital city. So we have a tremendous responsibility to set the standard. This program would be unique and that Connecticut, by the state legislature, does not allow for traffic cameras like this. So as part of our report, we will have to indicate that we, that we've thought through this, this plan, that we've identified a service provider that is able to work within the systems that currently exist in Connecticut. So Ricky, that's a great point, and, and that's absolutely a charge of this task force. It's to be intentional, to be mindful and to be thoughtful in what we produce so that our state leaders have confidence in, 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 you know, the work that we've done. So thank you for that.
One more thing, lastly, and I don't know if this will put any ease to, to this concern or not, but we, we are concerned about, when I say we, is that I'm, I'm speaking about what you said earlier with respects to the NAACP and all these people targeting the, these cameras targeting people. And this camera will only operate if, when that light turns red, you enter that zone, right? That fenced in zone. If you enter that intersection is when that camera will operate. It will not operate outside of, of that time. So if you're doing, let's just say you are doing illegal activity, but the light is green, you are okay so long as that light is green. The minute that light turns red, you're done because you're going to get caught, right? Via picture. So, I mean, I, I, so long as the cameras and are operating like that and, you know, when that can be shown, I, I, I don't see, to your point, uh, Hyacinth, I don't see where the problem is. I mean, they're specific and specific for that task only.
Well, and to Hyacinth's point, if you break the law, you break the law. So if you enter that intersection, when the camera, when the light is red, you will have a picture taken if this program is implemented.
Absolutely.
So that's the whole, that's the whole point. Um, we'll go ahead and move on to Chief Teal. Chief Teal, you have the floor.
I was once at the State Department of Transportation's headquarters when a motor vehicle accident came in. It was a long time ago. So long ago, we actually had tow booths here in the state of Connecticut. And there were cameras focused on the tow booths. And as the accident was progressing, the dispatchers were looking closer and closer at the accident with these cameras. I thought it was a fantastic idea. So we have, or had mobile data computers on the fire apparatus. And I said, why don't we, we put these on the fire truck so that we can have one on every street that can look at a building and tell us if we've got heavy fire showing, et cetera, et cetera. We couldn't do it. Why? Because we were looking at houses. The State Department of Transportation were just looking at cars. I think we have to make that, uh, very clear, that we simply will focus these cameras solely on intersections and no one's home. Because if we start talking about including someone's home in the periphery or something to that effect, based upon my experience, the answer will be a flat no, unless things have changed since I looked into it last.
Yeah, that's a great point. Thank you, Chief Teal. Um, so before I, I give the floor back to our chair, Helen Nixon, are there any additional questions for this committee?
I have one.
My lord.
Per camera, estimated cost per camera. I looked at some of the studies that you gave us on the, the data from Maryland, and they were talking about a hundred thousand dollars per camera. Is that, is that real?
No, the, the cameras are much more affordable than that. But I, I do, I do believe, and, and I asked for this committee's support or correction if I'm wrong. I do believe that the cost varies depending on the, or the service provider. So I, I can't, don't quote me on that, but I believe that that's the case. Victor?
Yes. Uh, yeah, the cost does vary between the service provider. They're much cheaper than that, but when you start adding them up, uh, you know, and trying to cover a city, the cost is, you know, going to go up. That's what I'm, I'm trying to see. Um, I've sent out a form to, to Xerox or to Conduent to see if they're willing to work us. Well, you know, I'm, I'm hoping maybe we get a home team advantage there with that, so we can get something for much cheaper, if not at cost or, or something, you know? We'll see when, 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 uh, if, when they reach back for.
What range are you talking about? Per camera, far as the construction that's needed to put it in place and the upkeep and maintenance?
Right. Right. So that's, that's the thing. It's like, so they'll come in and put the cameras on. I don't know if you're familiar with like the solar panel installations that go around all over the city. They're subsidized, or they'll come in and say, put it in for free, but they're taking back their money, like a, a majority of the profits that, that those devices, uh, uh, generate. So the same thing is like the cost of service would be that the percentage that we get back from the, you know, and, and if we go with another smaller service provider, yeah, there'll be some upfront costs for each one, uh, generally, but there, there, it's going to be in the tens of thousands. Again, it depends on, on the service provider. So I'm, I'm hoping by the next time, uh, the next meeting we have, I'll have some, uh, uh, offer from, from Xerox to see what they can bring. So it, it, you know, closer, closer to as small, as light as possible, if not zero.
Okay. So are there any other questions from the task force for the service provider subcommittee? Seeing none, uh, let's go ahead and move on to the public safety advocacy committee. Now, Hyacinth, I, I definitely don't want to put you on the spot, but Trish and Claudine are not in attendance tonight. Do you have anything from your committee that you're comfortable reporting on?
Actually, actually, they hadn't reached out to me to say anything. And, um, yeah, and I, I have been busy too. So they haven't reached out to me. So they were having a meeting or anything like that. So therefore I have nothing to say. I'm listening.
Okay, Hyacinth. Adam, can you make a note to a follow up with both Trish, Terrellia and Claudine to get an update from them so that we can send it out to the rest of the task force? And, uh, Ms. Helen Nixon, are, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
All right. So I want to let you know that we're done with the committee reports. We did not have quorum at the beginning of the meeting, so we did not approve the minutes. If it's okay with you, are you comfortable having a motion on the floor to approve the minutes from our last meeting?
Yes, they're very comfortable.
All right. Thank you very much.
A motion, yes, to approve the minutes.
And this is for everyone else. This is from the meeting on May 26th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from May 26th?
Archbishop Dexter Markson will.
Okay. So the motion has been moved.
Seconded.
Favor.
Aye.
Aye.
But the motion is carried. I, I'd just like to say, I'm sorry I was late, but I had an emergency meeting that I had to attend. Okay. So I missed most of the meeting. So what I'd like to, at this point, I'm in a location, David, there's, there's a lot of feedback. Okay? So I'm going to ask that you continue to, uh, conduct the meeting. I don't have a problem with that because I'm not in a position to really, you know, do so. It's a lot of feedback. I'm trying to, uh, keep it under control. Okay. I, I will like to say I, 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 I got the, uh, the, the message from David and I'm sure everyone got that message that this is going to be his last meeting. And David, you did announce that the meeting today, right?
So I, I did make a, a So I did make a brief announcement that Adam Murphy is going to be coming on as the new chief administrative officer. I did give the task force some background on Adam. He actually has been working with council president and I since 2020 to create this task force. So I do feel very comfortable that you're all are in good hands. And I'm very sad to be leaving the city, but also optimistic that this task force will put together some really great recommendations.
Okay, fantastic. Is Adam on that right now?
Yes, I am, Ms. Nixon.
Yeah, I can't see your face. I don't know.
Well, it's nice to hear from you today.
I'm having problems anyway, so I get a chance to do that later. Okay, so at this time, so we have heard, I did understand that the committees had a problem trying to meet, okay? And I understand how you never got a chance to meet. So in cases like that, we do have to meet. I would say, I don't know how to really deal with that, okay? Because people are just not really meeting the way they should. So, separate incident in Hyacinth's case, she could just go head on and call the meeting, make the calls herself and get people together.
So Ms. Helen, that's a great point. I did ask, I did ask Adam Murphy to follow up with Claudine and Trish. Trish did email me beforehand to tell me that she wasn't going to be able to attend this meeting. They are the co-chairs of that committee. And so Adam will follow up with them and then, you know, we'll make sure that they get back on track.
Right, because in a committee, if the chairperson doesn't get in contact with you, I would suggest that a committed member just take the initiative and, and call and make sure that that meeting does go forth. Okay, so at this point, we going to decide when we're going to meet again? Or is it going to be the last, what did we say, the third?
The third Thursday of the month. This was, yes, this was a special meeting, so I definitely appreciate everyone's flexibility. But moving forward, it's going to be the third Thursday of the month.
Okay, everyone agreed to that. So, okay, so I guess we're ready to adjourn again.
Ms. Nixon, Madam Chairwoman? Madam Chairwoman, if I may please. I would like to somehow, some way confirm that our meetings don't clash with other meetings. I have it in my calendar. The last time we met, I had an annual meeting with Hartford Next. And I did inform you ahead of time that I could not make it to this meeting because of that. I just want to make sure that as we stick with this third Thursday, that it doesn't clash with other meetings that we're already obligated to attend.
But Thursday is next meeting. They always have their meeting on the third Thursday.
No, that's not going to work.
But we discussed that when we first got started, everyone, you know, picked that date because there are other things on the up Thursdays.
I did, I did agree to third Thursdays, but quite frankly, since then, I've been appointed to Hartford Next. So things have changed, is what I'm saying. I don't know if that's the same thing for other people, but.
What we could do for the sake of this meeting is Adam will coordinate with everyone, send another email out. We go into these discussions already blocking out days that generally don't tend to work for city council. However, we try to be mindful of the NRZs as well. And so Adam, I will leave that to him to coordinate with the group. He will send another email out and we will iron out another day. Once a day is confirmed, then we'll resend out the schedule for this year so that everyone is on the same page.
Okay, David, thank you. David, thank you for everything you've done, okay?
You're right, David, we really appreciate you. We're really going to miss you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David. David, David, we have a special guest who just wants to say one word to you before, before we adjourn.
Hey, David, I just heard that you're leaving the city. People that know me, know me well. This is extremely rare. You are a true professional and a consummate professional. And of all the people I've worked with in the city, you are at the top of the list. You will be dearly missed, dearly missed. All right, God bless you.
Thank you very much, Stan. I really appreciate that. I really care for the city and I'm very grateful to have had the opportunity to serve the city of Hartford for the last four years. I appreciate all of you. I've worked with all of you, or most of you over the last couple of years, doing different things. And so I'm definitely very grateful for all of you. I'm inspired by the work that you all do in the community. And I'm looking forward to continuing to support this group. Even though I won't be a city employee, I'm still going to be here, I'm still going to be present, and I want you all to succeed. So thank you very much, Stan. It was good to see you.
Good to see.
Okay, and I just, and I said the same thing when I heard about it. I became very emotional because I just felt that David was an asset to the city. I mean, he had just what it had, just what we need to move the city forward. I mean, he's always been there for whatever we need him for. He always prompt to return your phone calls and even for, like this particular meeting, anything you need, David is there. He was there. So I'm just hoping that we continue to move in the same direction as if he's still here. And David, we're looking forward to you. You can even come to this meeting anytime. I'm giving you a special invitation, okay? And give us some input anytime you would want to. So again, we're going to really miss you. We love you and God bless you.
Thank you very much, everyone. There's nothing else on our agenda?
So we can, do we need a motion to adjourn to tell the next meeting? So we're saying when the next meeting going to be until Adam get back to us. He's going to send out another email to let us know, to have us all to confirm a date again. So right now, we don't know. Correct, because we just said tentatively the third Thursday, unless we hear different.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's fair. So the third Thursday would be the 14th
Right.
of July, but Adam will coordinate early next week with everyone. And we will get a date that works for y'all. So I don't have anything else, Ms. Nixon. So if you'd like to adjourn the meeting at 7:13 PM.
Okay, meeting adjourned until the next time. Goodbye.
Thank you all.
Good night.